Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the Whole Meeting for April 18, 2017. I call this meeting to order and ask the Clerk to again call the roll.
Trustee Cammer?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Danny?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. First item we have this evening on our agenda is under Planning and Zoning.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two items. First, Alden Estates of Bartlett, and second, the Administrative Site Plan Review Text Amendment. So with regards to item number one, the Alden Estates of Bartlett, we have for discussion only the petitioner's requests forwarding out of the Plan Commission. With that, I'll turn that over to staff.
Thank you, Trustee Ranky. Alden Estates petitioner Randy Shulo on behalf of Alden Realty Services, and they're in the audience tonight. This is for the -- it's lot two of the Artis Senior Living Project. As you remember, Artis is being built on the front of the lot, south of Apple Orchard, and the other lot, and it's hard to see on this, is the Easterly Lot, and Alden occupying this property. It actually meets within the tenants of, if you remember, we had an ordinance that there was a list of permitted and preferred uses, and this is one of them. Property was annexed in 1978. It was subdivided with the Artis Senior Living Project as a PD. Alden Estates, again, occupying the second lot. It's a pretty much a -- it's a rehab facility primarily. People are brought there after they obviously get the necessary rehab. They can live there and stay until their rehab assignment is done. It's a preliminary and final PUD plan for a 68-bed nursing facility with both short-term and long-term facility. As you can see by the design, it's a beautiful facility. 4.7-acre lots, three-story building, average height is 44 feet. It's 66,400 square foot, which includes a penthouse on the roof for the enclosure of the rooftop mechanicals. The design is a nice brick with concrete cast stone. There's a small little wetland on the lot, which they are leaving alone, and the 50-foot buffer has been maintained in accordance with the DuPage County requirements. There is a circular drop-off area for the facility. You come in off of 59, come in here, drop off, and then exit back out the same way. It's an outdoor patio, gazebo. There is no changes to that access point that IEDA approved with the subdivision. Our traffic consultant, Coulter Transportation, recognized this was a low-trip generator, and his review stated that of the land uses permitted in the previous ordinance, this facility would be most compatible with the right-in, right-out access. They are low-peak-hour trip generators and have regular user base that will be familiar with the design. There has been some minor adjustments to the curbing to accommodate the fire truck access, and landscaping is proposed on the berm on the northeast portion of the property, which is abutting many of the homes that are there, so that will provide some buffering as well as the wetland on the south. And there here, if you have any questions, and it is subject to staff review of final engineering and landscape plans and on to the Plan Commission for review and subdivision.
Are there any questions from the committee? I'm very curious to see what, if anything, the neighbors are going to have to say about all of this. I think it was a little bit easier sell when we were considering the front part of the property, but now we're a little bit closer to the residents, and we're talking about a 44-foot-high building, so I'm very, very interested to see what they have to say.
There's a hundred and -- we're trying to read it. Is it 162 or 82-foot setback from the side of the property? Is that right, Jim?
I'm going to have to look it up on the plan, because I can't read it either. It's a pretty good size setback over there. Yeah, maybe, Randy, you want to answer that, because I can't read it either on this sheet.
It's about 182. But can I just say a few words real quick, and then we can answer any questions? Is that all right? You know, we're happy to be here. First of all, my condolences to the passing of your trustee. That's -- she seems like a very special lady, and I know it's a difficult night for many of you. Just to kind of kick off where we are, we're happy to be here before you tonight and introduce our proposed development. I understand your concern that we may have some issues with the neighbors, and we will meet with the neighbors ahead of the next meeting, and we've met with the church already to see about hosting a meet-and-greet over there. So we'll work with the community on that, and we've faced that same obstacle many, many times. But maybe before we get started, I could just, real quick, my name is Randy Shulo, and I'm president of Alden. With me today, I have our whole development team, and we can all answer any questions. We have our architects, Michael Bailey, who's the president of Alden Design Group, and Rob Kim. We have Joey Shulo, who's our project manager. We have Steve Friedland, our zoning attorney, and we have our engineer, Sim Khan, who worked on the Artis site as well. So I'd like to first thank Roberta Grill and Tony Freiden for their help in steering us towards the site, because we've been looking in this community for a long time, trying to find the perfect site, and it was challenging. And we're really looking forward to moving forward. We thought being on the Artis site would be a perfect location, because it would have the sense of a continuum of care. You'll have the assisted living on the front end, and then the skilled nursing post-acute care rehabilitation on the back end. Maybe before we get started and answer your questions on the site plan, which Michael Bailey could answer the setbacks and some of your other concerns, just to give you a little introduction on Alden and who we are, I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with our organization, but Alden was founded by my father in the early 1960s, and we actually started as general contractors, building schools and park districts. In 1970, we built our very first skilled nursing facility on Lawrence Avenue and Marine Drive in the city of Chicago. We still own and operate that facility today. So once we're in a facility, once we're in a community, we are there for the long haul to work with the community and be a part of it. Besides for the 35 healthcare facilities that we have from 1970, when we built the first till now, we also have 11 independent senior living community. So we are a growing organization. We are local. We are here in Chicago in the suburban market. We have two facilities in Wisconsin and two in Rockford, but we're really in the suburban market. Alden is really a vertically-integrated company. We have our own design team, our own construction company, our own management company, as well as our pharmacy, home health, durable medical equipment, and therapy company. So we're very vertically-integrated and work closely with -- to help our seniors and work closely with all the communities. So I just wanted to kind of share that with you. And one other thing I want to just share with you is, we do have a certificate of need. If you know anything about building a hospital or a skilled nursing facility, you have to apply to the Health Facilities Planning Board to be able to obtain a certificate of need to build a skilled nursing facility. So at the end of last year, we were successful in applying for that certificate of need, which is very valuable. And now we're really looking forward to just working with you and the community and the zoning process and trying to move this to the next part of the process, and we will work with the neighbors, and hopefully, they won't be as bad as, you know, some areas, you know, we face the same thing in other communities, so hopefully, it won't be too bad. I know there was another project approved. There was a three-story building years back, so I think I'll stop there, because I could keep rambling on, and I'll just, if you have any questions for the architects, we're here to answer anything.
Thank you.
Do we know what the exact setback is, then?
It says on here, 162 feet, 10 inches, I think. Is that a six or an eight? 182 feet, 10 inches, and that's really to -- it's farther from the tallest portion of the building, right? That's just a portion of the building, because it kind of sits -- it sits north-south. The bulk of the building sits north-south on the lot.
It's Michael Bailey, president of Alden Design. It's approximately 94 feet from the south property line, approximately 235 feet from the north property line. So we've tried to hold the building in that southwest corner, specifically to try and keep it as far away from the neighbors as possible.
Just kind of curious, out of just wondering about things, other than Artis being in the front lot, what were the demographics that brought you to Bartlett? What enticed you to come to Bartlett?
We were talking about earlier the certificate of need process. To be able to build a skilled nursing facility, there has to be a bed need in the community. So DuPage County, Bartlett area, was one of the areas that this Health Facilities Planning Board designated a need, so that's one of the reasons why we were looking. We had been looking at this area earlier, and there wasn't a bed need a few years back, so that's why we're here. There is a need.
Do you think there's any issue with other facilities that are in town that you might be competing against?
There is one other skilled nursing facility in town, and I think we're building a very small 68-bed post-acute care facility, so there's plenty of room for everybody. What we do is a lot of short-term rehab, so maybe individuals come in, hip knee replacements, stroke recovery, and then go home to their house. So I think there's enough for everybody, and the Health Facility Planning Board agreed.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
When it served on the Plan Commission, we had talked about some kind of medical nursing facility at that location, and I had the same concern as Trustee Ranky had about the height of the building when I first looked at it. And then, you know, it just, it's like those people that boarded that property right now to the east side, they hear the traffic on Route 59, and I'm wondering if that wouldn't even act as a buffer for the noise that they have, so. But that was the intent when the first part of the property was built.
And it looks also like you're trying to preserve as many existing trees along the pond or the wetland as you can. Is that right?
Yes.
That's good. Thank you. Anything else?
I would just say it's a nice-looking building, and Plan Commission will take a look at it.
All right, so we'll forward that along to the Plan Commission.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
The second item we have is the Administrative Site Plan Review Text Amendment. So, Jim, you want to introduce that?
Yes, thank you. The Administrative Site Plan Review Text Amendment is something that was discussed previously as a potential for expediting the development of projects that don't require special uses, subdivision, PUDs, variances, any of those types of things, where there is no public hearing necessary. Particularly, we see that in the industrial parks. We've experienced a few of them recently. You're going to see one fairly soon that's called -- it's Ridge, and it's our second building. If we had this adopted, we would be able to review it in a technical staff situation. Basically, we need to change the existing ordinances for site plan that's in the zoning code. We have a pretty efficient process right now for when things are building permit review. They come in, they're reviewed by the technical staff, which is Building, Public Works, Community Development, our Fire Department, our Police Department, and if everything meets the setbacks, the site plan, the designed parking requirements, all those types of things, we can approve it in a building permit process. And that's the gist of the ordinance. Anything that would need a special use site plan, a variance, any of the PUD types of amendments that would require those types of things would still come through the normal process where you're seeing, like Alden would go through that. That one wouldn't qualify. But we anticipate some industrial buildings that'll be coming through to do that, some commercial buildings. We've opened up the Blue Heron Business Park. We expect those to continue on without any -- with technical staff review. And I mention Blue Heron because in Blue Heron's ordinance and annexation agreement, as long as we've kind of given them a pre-approved site plan situation, where as long as they meet the certain setbacks and that, and the first building in that park was one, was the traffic control protection, they met all the tenants of the agreement. So we approve that with the building permit process. So that's the sum and substance of it. It takes the normal public hearing, which would stay in place, follow that process as it is spelled out, and if they don't have any public hearing process, it will no longer go to the Plan Commission and come to the Village Board for final approval. It'll be done through the technical staff in the building permit review process.
And I just wanted to add that the Plan Commission is in support of this. Actually, they suggested that they were seeing a number of things that they really didn't feel that they had anything to react to. They've kind of felt that these particular projects could be moved along quicker. This process will reduce our development schedule by three months. It is a significant savings in time, and several of our neighbors use this process as well, so it dovetails nicely with the Board's direction to shorten up our development process and support throughout our groups.
Well, wasn't that the attendant or strategic planning that we talked about expediting this? So I think that this is wonderful. Three months, it could speed up the process?
If it's all in, as if they follow the checklist and things are all submitted correctly, it can do that.
It seems like a common-sense way to streamline otherwise routine development.
Yes.
All right, so if there aren't any other questions, we'll just pass this along to the Zoning Board of Appeals for public hearing.
I would just add that I think that one of the directives we gave the acting Village Administrator was just this, so thank you, Paula, for spearheading these type of things that make us a little more business-friendly.
Right, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, Mr. President, that's all we have for planning and zoning tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next item we have in the committee of the whole meeting is Finance and Gulf Committee, Chairman Danny.
Thank you very much. The first item, if I'm reading this correctly, is the Cook County Minimum Wage Ordinance. We had -- it's come before us last board meeting, and we asked it to be postponed or tabled until we could -- so we could have a little more information, gather a little more information, a little more input. And Brian, if you would like to address?
I'll do that. In October 2016, the Cook County Board adopted the Cook County Minimum Wage Ordinance. It is different than state law or federal law. Currently, State Minimum Wage Act provides for $8.25 per hour. Cook County is proposing that, beginning if the ordinance goes into effect July 1, 2017, starts at $10 per hour, goes up to $13 per hour beginning in 2020, and thereafter increases by the Consumer Price Index. So a few businesses approached the village, I don't know if it was staff or the mayor, requesting that the village adopt its own ordinance so as to opt out from the Cook County ordinance. The Cook County Minimum Wage Ordinance does not apply to the village itself, so our employees, we are exempt from that act, but we have the ability to adopt an ordinance that is in conflict with the Cook County ordinance and thereby supersedes or trumps it. At the last meeting, Trustee Ranky raised the question of what authority does Cook County even have to adopt this ordinance? And don't ask me why, but online, you were able to -- I was able to find, and I think Trustee Ranky found, an opinion, a confidential opinion, but it was online, from the state's attorney's office to the Cook County Board saying, "We question your authority to pass this or enforce it." And nevertheless, the Cook County Board adopted. I can only believe that certain commissioners who were opposed to this may have posted that memo. That being said, one of the points they raised in that memo, which is included with this packet, is the option of municipalities to opt out by passing a conflicting ordinance, and they are of the opinion that municipalities can do that by simply having an ordinance that's inconsistent. In Bartlett, where we're in three counties, you have an even stronger, perhaps, reason to do it, because we would have different wages for different parts of the village that businesses would have to comply with. Now, it's not just where your principal office is located, it's if you have an employee who works more than two weeks in a two-week period, that then these wages would apply. So what you have before you is essentially an ordinance that conflicts with the Cook County ordinance for the sole purpose of being in conflict with it, and what it sets is the state minimum wage. That's all. We're just knocking out, so to speak, we're opting out from the Cook County ordinance.
Do you see that there would be any exposure liability for the village by enacting this?
I don't believe so. I believe that the Cook County ordinance will be challenged either by a business or another, you know, potentially a municipality, but I don't see by opting out, particularly with that opinion that we have a copy of, they would be hard-pressed. And I think eventually, the county will try and chase businesses and then perhaps businesses to enforce it and try and penalize them. I did note one issue, and that is on certain county, Cook County programs like that, 6B and things like that, that perhaps they would penalize the business if they're not paying minimum wages. Would they penalize the whole village? That's unknown, and in other words, you'll recall, we did a 6B property tax treatment where we passed a resolution for the business that was the old Main Steel Building on Devon, and we had to pass the ordinance. I don't believe, as long as that business is paying above the, you know, minimum wages, I don't see, I doubt that there would be a penalty to us, but that is an open question. I think they're going to have their hands full with trying to enforce it against businesses before they go that route.
Do you think we need to have an automatic repealer if the Cook County ordinance is struck down or amended out?
I think we can just approach it at that time.
Okay.
Because, you know, when that happens, it'll be at a trial court level and an appeal, and then one, you know, just keeping an eye on that. So I think this accomplishes that. You'll see staff put together a list, and it's a moving target. There's a lot of municipalities that are doing this. We did it a little earlier than some, just so, you know, you guys could see it and there was time to react to it. So there's municipalities getting at it all the time who are doing this, because it's cheaper than fighting the fight and taking on these penalties, which, you know, it could be two years of unknown where it's challenged, and they're penalizing businesses in the meantime. That's why I think this is the better approach.
Thank you.
So what are we suggesting, opt out of this?
Yeah.
We're suggesting to pass this ordinance and opt out of the Cook County ordinance.
And really, we're putting the onus back on the state and federal officials who should be handling this in the first place, but...
We're opting out of a subjective ordinance passed by Cook County that may or may not, most likely is not even legal.
Are we going to draft an ordinance?
It's attached.
It's attached, yeah.
So will we vote on that this evening?
No.
Next board meeting.
It was referred back to committee.
So could Cook?
So that's why we're here tonight.
Could Cook County penalize us in any other aspects?
Any Cook County program, potentially, that's like a benefit, but that, the only one I can think of offhand is that 6B and some of those separate tax treatments, and I think they're going to look at it at the applicant rather than us, because, recall, we're exempt.
And I think that Cook County is going to have their hands full with a number of different businesses.
Yeah. Right.
Large businesses that I've heard, so.
Can we move it along then?
Yep, moving on to the board for...
And the next item that we have is the Cook County Earned Sick Leave Ordinance.
Same...
The same general issue. It's just not as clear, because you don't have a state, like with minimum wage. The state minimum wage law is $8.25 per hour, and that could be amended. With sick leave, it's a little more ambiguous in terms of what the state law is. The state law does not require paid sick leave, and in 2017, effective January 1 of 2017, the state of Illinois adopted a sick leave statute, but it doesn't require paid sick leave. It requires if you have any kind of sick leave, you have to offer it to all your employees. So it's a little different in that regard, but the same problems that existed with the minimum wage really relate to sick leave too, because you're going to have different rules for different parts of the village. And, you know, they really, you know, they're mandating that you give paid sick leave, and a lot of private businesses don't do that, period. They might give leave and different things, different types of benefits. There's still the federal FMLA Family Medical Leave Act that supersedes some of this, but that's more dealing with sick, you know, dealing with children, sick family members, and getting leave in that regard, and our ordinance would certainly not circumvent that. So it puts us back to whatever the state and federal law may be and not imposing these Cook County restrictions that suffer from the same maladies that I just talked about for minimum wage, which is, sick leave is really more of a statewide concern or even a federal concern. It is not a local or regional concern, which begs the question, then, what power do we have to do it? Well, the state's attorney says we do, and if you look at what we're doing, we're just trying to get us back to what the state and federal rules are and treating all our businesses in town so that they're operating on the same rules, and that's what this ordinance would accomplish, like, much like the other one that we just talked about.
Yes. So we push it right onto the board? Is anyone have questions about this?
I don't have any other questions about this.
Got a correction for that one?
That concludes everything under Gulf of Finance, Mr. President.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Ziegler.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Next item we have this evening is under License and Ordinance. Chairman... Okay, I'll take it. Barley Municipal Code Appointment Amendment. So we've talked, I've talked about this somewhat, and with staff, there were some interesting things going on with our municipal code regarding appointment of village officers. Bartlett Municipal Code outlines appointment of officers created by statute. In the ordinance, the proposed amendments are to clarify the appointment process, renewal and removal of officers, and provision for acting officer when the holder of the office is incapacitated or the office becomes vacant. Paula, you want to... Paula, you want to outline this? Are you prepared for that, or should we have our village attorney go through it?
I am going to pass off to Brian pretty quickly. Like you said, that this amendment kind of cleans up some things that weren't very clear in our ordinance, specifically adds information for acting positions, clears up what positions are appointed, what positions are employees. And Brian made a number of revisions, and I'll ask him to walk through those.
I noticed in looking at the electronic format today when I was talking to our labor attorneys and trying to coordinate this with our personal policy manual, as I'm looking through your agenda packet as opposed to my paper packet, that you didn't have the first portion which deals with appoint of officers in general. And so that's what I placed on the dius this evening, thought it was included with that. But that's just the intro, so to speak, covering the general point of officers. And at the end of that is a removal process. In doing this, I did not add any municipal officers, nor did I take away any municipal officers from what's in the current part of municipal code. Some of the issue came up and confusion over the prior powers of the village administrator and an amendment to that. And that got us to looking and also at our process where we have not appointed officers on an annual basis despite what the code, our municipal code says that, you know, and so you had different things. And I think the confusion in part is what's an officer and what's an employee? The municipal code, when we're, the Bartlet Municipal Code, when we're creating an officer, it says in several respects that are listed here, A through F, these are, there is hereby created the Office of Village Administrator, there is hereby created the Office of Village Attorney. So it starts with there is hereby created, and those are generally your offices. Now, when you get into some of the case law, sometimes officers in personnel matters and dealing with benefit issues are treated as both. And so that's why I'm talking to our labor attorney to make sure that, you know, coordinating here. But this calls and clarifies that we're talking about the annual appointment of officers. The village administrator was a little different. Why is you can't make the term longer than the term of the current mayor? So the one that's a little different is the village administrator. It could be that, that long, and that gives you some flexibility when you get to an employment contract situation. You could make it one year and make everyone the same. That's your prerogative. But I, that was the one that was a little different. The removal provisions, so, so if you are an officer, and that would be the village administrator, the village attorney, the village treasurer, the village budget officer, the director of public works, the building director, believe it or not, electrical inspector, plumbing inspector, health officer, chief of police. In the, under the chief of police, the chief of police has the authority to appoint the two deputy chiefs and the three commanders, and then you have the village engineer. So when they're an officer, they are appointed by the village president with the advice and consent of the board. And as far as removal goes, it follows, it mirrors the language of the state statute, which it didn't. And there's a little carve-out for fire and police. We have a police commission, and those, and the hiring there is governed by a separate statute. And they're hired through a process with our police commission, ranked and rules there. And if, for instance, a police chief, you know, police officer removed, they go back to what their standing, if you will, is under the police and fire commission statute in our police commission. But, so you have a couple of other places beside this and an ordinance. The development director, interestingly, is not an officer, but he is the zoning officer in the zoning code, in the zoning ordinance. So I didn't change those things. I left who historically was an officer alone, and I did not purport to add or remove any. What is a little unusual is you have the same person who is the finance director, which is a position, the village treasurer, which is an officer under both this ordinance and state statute. And then this ordinance calls, has the office of village budget officer. So I have to just point that out. You've got somebody wearing presumably three hats. So I don't know if there's any questions. We're just trying to, and the idea being if the board is okay with this, as we bring this ordinance to the board, you know, take the redlining out, and the board pass this at the next meeting, and we would appoint officers for each of these, presumably the people who are holding those offices now. And we would do that on an annual basis. Somebody like myself, who is an officer, but also I'm not an employee but a contractual employee, we will bring those contracts to the board at the next meeting as well. So you'll be voting on my contract. And it was, we were talking about perhaps a longer term, but it's cleaner, I think, to keep everything the same, do the contract a year, the appointment a year. And that's what the goal would be here. Any questions?
Well, I guess I do have one, just about terminology, and God only knows when I'm going to ask it, but when you put in deleted words, Brian, for instance, when it says the village president, and then it used to say "and trustees," but it's been changed to "with the advice and consent of the board of trustees," what was the basis or the reasoning for that?
Trying to be consistent with all officers. Some said the village president and the board, some said with the advice and consent. Typically, officers are appointed by the mayor with the advice and consent. I'm not quite sure when it says "and the board" what that means. And I think it clears up any confusion. I was just trying to be consistent, treating all officers the same. Why the language was slightly different, I don't know.
Okay. Just as I was reading through it?
No, it's, there was a few of those inconsistencies, and I'm just trying to make them all consistent and uniform.
I think one thing we should keep in there, and I don't see any issue with it, is the village administrator may be removed from office at any time by a simple majority vote of the corporate authorities. I think that was, I think, adopted in, what, 1982? And there was, be a reason for it, and I think that should stay in ordinance.
This is a manner, I confess that I talked a little bit, just more in generalities, with trustee Ranky, in terms of where should we go with removal? And what we did was we mirrored the state statute, and that's what this does. And I think that's better than a hybrid of whatever those two amendments combined were in that office. So I'm suggesting that we use this new language so that it mirrors the statute on removal of officers that's in the Illinois Municipal Code. I think it's consistent then across the board on all officers, rather than, you know, cherry picking something that we liked in the old one. There was plenty of things not to like, perhaps, in the old one.
Yeah. I would, I would probably disagree with that. I think if four members sat up here and there was a reason for removal, and four members of this board thought that that should happen, there's probably a pretty good reason for it, so...
This whole notion of then the appeal process, like if the mayor removed and then the board, they can, the administrator can take that to the board, and there's a timeframe, that all follows the state statute. So essentially, if you had four, yeah, the two-thirds vote is in the state statute, I'd be reluctant to vary from that and just go with the majority. That being said, it was in the old one, so I can't say too much about that. But we're trying to fix things.
So this isn't something that could also be the village president, or however you word it above, with, with the advice and consent of the board of trustees, is on any formal charge, whenever the president is of the opinion, the interest, that sort of...
That mirrors the state statute, exactly.
Well, that does, but it's not in it, right?
Well, I'm not sure what you're reading.
Well, here, when it says...
All the red, that mirrors the state statute.
But I'm saying, it wouldn't make sense to add what you've added above with the advice and consent of the board of trustees?
Well, removal is treated differently.
Okay.
And if you start moving...
That's only because of appeal, the right of the administrator to come before the board then for appeal.
Right.
Okay.
And discussions, if you start changing drastically from what the Illinois Municipal Code shows, you're going to be in for a long run if you go outside those windows.
And I don't want to, I don't want to drone on and on about this. I could. But one of the things that struck me about the way that the village code was written was it was literally a hodgepodge because this notion of the separation of powers that you see at the federal or state level applies to municipalities as well. So there are certain authority vested in us as members of the board of trustees, and there are certain authority vested in the village president because he's the executive. And so what the village code had done was sort of mishmashed all that together.
Yeah.
And, you know, it...
Or eliminated it altogether.
Right, or eliminated it. Right, so when you take that apart, you have to decide what's the proper role of the village board, what's the proper role of the executive. So this is why it's important that we pay attention to who the village president is. This is why, as members of the board of trustees, it's important for us to act as legislators. So if we don't like what's going on, there's things that we can do, just like you see in DC and Springfield. I understand your concern because it is ceding authority, but I think it's authority that's properly vested in the, in the village president. And it's also hard to have these discussions because, you know, we know Mayor Wallace, we know, you know, the village administrator, the officers, but if there's a problem in the center seat, we have things we can do. And I don't want to see that happen in Bartlett, and it's certainly not, not targeting you in any way.
Sure.
But I don't want to see that happen, but there are things we can do.
There's methodology.
Right, and when it comes to that point, what I'd like to see is, is our code mirror the Illinois Municipal Code because when you go to court, or we hire our own legislative attorney, God help us all, then, then we have a frame of reference, we have a common ground other than some of this kooky stuff that's in here that makes no sense. We have no idea why it was done 20 or 30 years ago, and it really just changes that, that balance. So with that, I'll stop droning on, but thank you for indulging me.
I mean, it's really a two-edged sword here, to speak, because obviously it gives the president the ability to let go of administrator on his own accord. However, it also puts him in a position to be judged on that decision, and, you know, depending on the factors that bring him to that decision could be bad. I mean, maybe you just don't like something, you decide...
Therein lies the balance of power.
It does. Well, then, power corrupts, and absolute power corrupts, corrupts absolutely. So we've got to be careful of that, you know, so I think there's...
I recommend we mirror, you know, follow the state statute and not try and do get to the hodgepodge of different, trying to cherry pick provisions. I think it's a little dangerous. This is more consistent and supportable, so that's what I recommend.
Okay. If we find there are issues, as we just found that there are some issues, I'm certainly, as long as I'm here, I'm amenable to going back and changing things. So if we find from experience that things, certain things aren't working, then let's have that conversation. And that's, I mean, that's, that's the legislative role, so we could propose that from the floor during any meeting if we don't like something.
And I suggest that the village attorney brought up some valid points with one person wearing one hat, so that's where we really need to start focusing on what we're going to do with some of those positions. Do they need to be eliminated? Do they need to be consolidated? The health officer and the budget officer, those are, once this frameworked down as a rough draft, it's a good draft, it's a, it puts the village in a, in a position where it should be from a legal standpoint and from a balance of power standpoint. From this point forward, we're going to, we're going to need to continue discussing the tweaks to this thing.
So all officers will be appointed every year?
Yes.
But not the village administrator?
The village administrator, because I think in all likelihood, you're going to be dealing with an employment contract, that's going to change the dynamic a little bit. And so I allowed for a little longer period of time there instead of annual, just so there's a little greater feeling of security, but not exceeding the authority in the municipal code, which said it can't be beyond the mayor's term.
Does that...
So currently, the mayor's term just started.
Does that follow state statute?
Yes. Yes, it does. There is nothing in the state statute that says you have to, officers only serve a one-year term, that they can't go, they can't have a term that's longer than the mayor's term.
I think if we, if all the other officers are appointed every year, I think the village administrator should follow the same procedure.
That's doable. We can do that.
And it's, it's somewhat of a, the appointment would be somewhat ceremonial because the village administrator that might be would be under contract, and typically that contract's going to be longer than a year, so it would be a ceremonial deal, but...
I can make that change to make it consistent, at least it's back to a consistent term, but that was the thought process, why it was different, that one was different.
What purpose does it serve, really? I mean...
Because we would, we, we do not have any power to remove the village administrator. And in the old ordinance, we do, and they're taking that power away, so...
So then maybe a reasonable compromise isn't...
An annual...
Yeah.
A one-year term?
You know, I, I really have a problem with, with the one year because here, you know, we, let me just, we just have appointed Paula to acting, and now she's under six months on that, right? Which I'd like to see changed, by the way, because I think she's doing an outstanding job, and I think it's ridiculous that she's still acting. I think we should just give her the position of village administrator. But now, we're asking this lady to move back in the village, and you want to review her on an annual basis? She should have a review, but I mean, the contract should be in keeping with, with the mayor. How can you ask the village administrator to make the commitment that you've, we've asked her to make, you know, and not order with a, with a four-year, four-year term?
You could, you could say that about all the officers.
I'm talking about the leader of our village, okay?
It would depend on how many year contract you would extend to them.
Well, that's it.
This is just ceremoniously.
I would make...
If they have a year contract, we wouldn't have to jump through this.
You should make it equivalent to the length of her con...
Is, is it acceptable, I think, if we make it the equivalent of the contract that's offered?
She still gets reviewed every year.
Something that the entire board determines.
Well, I, I'm not, yeah, this isn't about one particular person.
No.
This is about a village ordinance that was adopted many years ago, and now we're changing it. And I have a, I think I have an issue with it. And I think you're taking power away for no reason. You know, if there's an issue in that position, we do not have the authority to do anything. So, and if the mayor, at that time, I'm not even...
That's not the way I understand it.
In general terms, if he didn't want to do anything about it, then that puts us in a, a bind, or a...
Well, that's, I mean, we've got one person's opinion, and we've got all of our opinions, so we'll leave it as is, and we'll go to discussion at the next board meeting.
Well, my question is, should I leave it the language as it is, or...
From what I'm hearing, I think there's one opposed and four others in favor of leaving it. I mean...
I, I didn't hear you. You kind of...
One opposed and, and the other four are in favor of leaving it the way it's written?
I, I'm certainly willing... I'm certainly willing to entertain.
We're just talking about the village administrator's appointment.
Yeah, no, I heard, I heard all of it, just not the end. I'm willing to entertain the annual appointment, just to keep it with everybody else. And I understand what you're saying about, you know, but, you know, we could be talking about a village administrator from 10 or 20 years from now, and maybe they're going to live here, maybe they're not, but there has been some discussion of removing that provision, and, you know, do we want to do that, and things of that nature, so that's an issue that's going to have to be resolved one way or the other. We should, we should address it, we should decide as a matter of policy, do you want the village administrator to be required to live here or not? Do you want to give them a certain period of time to move into the village? I understand what you're saying, you know, I'm kind of of two minds on this too, because the village board had all this authority, nobody really knew that it was even there, and nobody sure would have, would have done anything about it. So we had a history of perhaps not following our code the way that you and I would like to have seen it followed, so this will hopefully bring us into alignment and focus all of our attention on what we want to see the future look like.
I think this, and I guess this particular thing was an anomaly, because we never had a village administrator with a contract.
That's another, that's another wrinkle.
I didn't hear you.
That's another wrinkle.
We've never had a village administrator with a contract, and you might want to blow out the can before it burns the flowers.
Yeah, I was thinking that too.
Yep, blow it out. So that's something else to take into consideration, because I.
I prefer not to. Let somebody else blow it out.
It's just, we've never been confronted with that before, so that's why it's never been an issue. Well, from the standpoint of we're doing this to follow state statute, is that we said, is it imperative that we do that? I mean, why do we need to do that?
Well, primarily, if you have, if you're not following state statute and you take action, and that action is being disputed by the person or office that you're taking that action against, it will have a lot more power if you don't have what the municipal code says is the right way to do it.
Let me just say that there are different forms of government, and what we had was a little bit of a hodgepodge of ordinances that follow the managerial form of government as opposed to the non-statutory where it's administrator. And in the old days, village managers were often from municipalities, larger municipalities, that adopted the managerial form by referendum. Now, there's a, two schools of thought as to whether, if you haven't done that, you could grant some broader powers, and that's what we had. And there are municipal attorneys that would say, unless you have the managerial form, you can't do this or that, the administrator can't have, or the manager can't have this power. From town to town, people started using manager and village administrator interchangeably, and then you have these different ordinances. So I looked at several ordinances that, because you can look at them from the municipality, but what you can't tell is which of those towns had adopted the managerial form formally. And I knew attorneys from some of those and would ask, and sometimes you'd see this, I don't want to call it hodgepodge, but this hybrid, if you will, and the question becomes, where do you draw the line if you're not following the state statute? So if you stick with the state statute, fine, could you have that one additional power regarding removal? Arguably, you could, but it's subject, it's probably going to, if there were ever removal, I'm not talking about Paul in particular, I'm talking about whoever may be in that office, it's an extra fight, an extra area of, of the fight. Now, I recognize it seems like we're giving up the power we had, when you look at what it said before and what we're proposing now, but I still think the cleanest and best and most defensible position is to mirror the removal provisions in the Illinois municipal code. If you didn't, you argue we're home rule, we can do this, but you start getting into this, is it, is that really something that really you could only do in a managerial form of government as opposed to what we have? So I'm trying to make things consistent across the board and follow the Illinois municipal code where they have procedures in place.
Does anyone, so if I'm getting this correctly, Trustee Hopkins's only concern is the appointment of the administrator annually?
Correct.
Correct?
I can draft the ordinance with option A, option B.
Yeah, let's draft it that way, we'll have discussion at board level.
So that'll be the only, it'll be one paragraph.
It's a variable.
Everything else will stay the same, but for that.
Is everybody good with that? We'll have another discussion at board level.
We'll have a chance to go home and dwell on it, and.
Yeah.
Okay. That is it, or do we have enough direction? I guess I'm talking to you, you have enough direction on that, right?
Yes.
Okay. Finally, this evening, and last item in our committee, the whole meeting is ended, Public Works Committee. Chairman Kamer.
The metro platform discussion, discussing realigning of the metro platforms in downtown Bartlett, been added to the village committee agenda to review the project's scope and determine the ability to seek Metro's approval and funding source for the project's scope, and I think the appropriate thing to do would be to turn this over to staff now.
Thank you, Trustee Kamer. We last discussed this when Trustee Carbonero brought it up at the village board meeting on February 21st about possibility to seek some federal funding to realign the commuter platforms east of Oak Avenue. He asked the board to put this on a future village board committee agenda, and the goal of that discussion could be to direct staff to get a cost estimate, get some preliminary design drawings, and prepare an accompanying funding request. Did some research in this project, and where we've had discussions in this before, the last time coming up in 2013, when there was some issues with some mid-track crossings at the Bertow Avenue, kind of the quads coming across the tracks onto the state, on, to get the train getting on the station. That was a issue that was raised. Metro, we met with the Metro staff engineers back then, and we discussed the reconfiguration of the platform, split platform design going back to the realigned. There was installation of appurtenances to the platform lights and what have you. The mid-track crossing on Bertow was discussed, and the installation of what they call inter-track fencing. There's a handout that just kind of shows what it was, just kind of the current platform and where it's going to be realigned. Back when we discussed that with the Metro engineers, they said there was no outside, there was no funding source at Metro, and that the village would have to seek some type of outside funding source for this work. They did say that the village would have to bear the entire cost of it, because Metro had put in money for us when we built this current station and split the platforms, that was done in two phases, and then enter into a new agreement with the village. There was some, in 2013, there was some cost estimates that they gave us, you can go through the cost estimates, but that is $2 million to do that, and I did not get into doing a new update on these, you'd have to invite Metro here to go over the estimates. I did talk to some Metro staffers, they generally said those cost estimates are accurate, and then add the cost of inflation over the last couple of years, so I didn't ballpark that, I didn't want to get into the CPI or any of that stuff. There was some discussion that you'd also have to pay for the demolition of the existing platform, and there's a possibility that the new platform, if we did a realignment, there would be some comm ed poles that would have to be, may have to be relocated. We went into, I had some other discussions with some Metro officials regarding the train loading and unloading timeframe, which they call the dwell time. When we did the split platform, the dwell time was a big issue, because at that time, traffic would back up all the way down to, not quite to Devon, but there would be a backup. That was going before a lot of the lights and everything, but the dwell time still is the five to seven minute dwell time. The ridership figures from Metro are 1,081 riders per day, they did not have their 2016 rider count available, that'll be coming out soon, it could be a change, they didn't give me any indication. We also did some analysis of the trains, because at the last discussion, and the last time we did the platforms, there was no Canadian Pacific in the mix, so to speak, as a freight carrier. Tyler did some analysis of this, and you can see that the train traffic for the freight line has increased tremendously. The numbers, you know, just going from 2009 to 2016, in the Crossing 14, which is the blue one that goes through the downtown, went from 1,0807 to 6,629. So there's obviously a tremendous increase in the freight traffic coming through the downtown, and it's, it's graphed here. That's a factor. Metro trains generally are, remain steady, 56 during the weekdays, 24 on Saturday, 18 on Sunday. The mid-track crossing was, again, was a discussion at that time, the surface crossing was estimated at 500,000. What they indicated, that if we did a surface crossing roughly at Bertow, it could negatively impact the quiet zone that we worked to achieve here. If you decided to, and they believed that was a safety issue with the mid-track, so they have installed that mid-track fencing since that time. And then just going on to discussion of a potential underpass, which Trustee Carbonero brought up in the discussion. The research I did, the recent, most recent one, there are several on the Metro system, and they've been built over the course of a number of years at different locations. Most recently, Lombard opened theirs in 2015, their overhaul for the whole project was estimated at like 9.7, when they bid it, it came in at 7.8. The tunnel portion was approximately $4 million. We did not do a cost estimate for Bartlett's tunnel, but that's, I visited Lombard the other day, and their tunnel's beautiful, and it connects, they have a kind of north and south side, just like we do, and it, it looks like it costs that much. So we're kind of, that's, that's the research I did. Some in substance of is, we're looking for a direction on how to proceed with this matter, follow up with Metro, hiring an engineering firm to go a more firmer cost estimate, and determine sources of funding. We may need some more engineering to get it to that point, I mean, I'm, I can look at a project and ballpark it, but to get this kind of estimate for a good grant application or funding application, we should have something a little firmer.
Did they ask for something firmer, or is this going to be good enough? I mean, realistically.
I have not done anything more firmer than this. This is, Metro's, the numbers I got in 2013 were from Metro engineers, probably based, it wasn't, it was based on projects that they are familiar with, and what they, you know, they do this all the time.
So is this enough to fill out the grant paperwork, or do we have to spend money on engineering to fill out the grant paperwork?
That is a good question, and I don't know the answer to that. I mean, the better numbers you have for applying for things is probably better for any kind of, if it's a competitive kind of grant, you know, you don't want to go to, you know, just for instance, when we do a grant application for, last one, we did one for a bike trail, we got a firm estimate, IDNR required that, we had to hire an engineer firm to get it to us. So I think it helps your application.
We checked on those bike paths this week, when we heard that some money came to the Park District. In the, in the joint taxing district meeting, they reported that they got some funds, grant funds released from the state, so I thought maybe our bike path.
Right.
Money would shake loose, but nothing from the state on that. We checked with Tom Cullen this week, and still no movement.
You had a conversation with Metro, who said that the estimates were pretty concrete, were those not the words that you used?
In, in 2013?
And they have changed, or they haven't changed?
These are the numbers I got in 2013, I didn't, they just said, you know, you can increase them based on a, you know, cost of living increase, it's actually CPI, the engineering index. I didn't do that for these numbers, and, you know, so if I did it for these numbers, and I don't know the cost of inflation over four years, you might add, you know, half a million dollars to that. I don't know, I didn't do it.
I wanted to ask you, if, if this were ever to proceed, you know, the one thought that coming through my mind is, you know, we talked about Rosika Park last, last meeting, and it's $600,000, and now we're, you know, I'm looking at 2 million here, plus, plus, plus. Is there any way that the village could recoup that over a period of time through parking or something, or is it just an expenditure that, that's it, it's done?
Use some pretty expensive parking.
Well, this might last maybe 50 years. I mean, is there any plan to recoup this, if in fact this does move forward?
I don't think there's, you know, we can dedicate parking revenue towards that, but, you know, we use that to maintain the parking lots, so I don't know what other revenue stream from the, from the rail road.
Where would this money come from?
We don't have it scheduled anywhere, you know, we are, we, Vince did have a conversation with Senator Roskam's office, that there may be some grant money available from the state.
The grant money wouldn't be in, for this full amount, would it? Could it?
We won't know until we apply.
Right, yeah.
But my question would be, what, what would be, we be applying for? Are we applying for relocating the platforms, or the underpass, the whole boat? And, you know, and I think, from my understanding from Vince, is that this would be kind of the earmark grants that come through the senator's office, rather than like our bike path grant that would, went through the IDNR.
I don't want to put words in Ray's mouth, but I think he's kind of getting at, with the motor fuel tax, let's say in theory, we needed to say that these numbers are just base numbers, there's $2 million to get this job done, and we had 675,000 that we had in motor, motor fuel, can that monies be used for things like that? It cannot?
No.
No.
Okay.
That's what I was curious about, though.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
I don't know that that was his question.
That's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine.
I was just curious if that's a way of rerouting money, some way to do something like that.
In previous years, when we built that train station, we, there were other grant monies available, and we used them, that railroad avenue was built with something called Operation Greenlight. Metro had money that they put money in for that station in their capital budget, and they have a capital improvement program. They are not going to do that this time from my conversations with them.
Well, let's go back and talk about the history of the train station, and why it was a split station. Can someone tell us a little bit about that?
I can tell you, as much as I can remember.
Yeah, me too. Between, between the two of us, maybe we'll get it figured out.
About a foot thick file back there, and I won't go on, I'll give you the short synopsis. It probably took eight or nine years to make that decision. We worked with, at the time, people are retired, Clay Weaver was their engineer, Metro engineer, guy named, well, Phil Pagano was the director, he's no longer with us, Betty Lloyd was our Metro liaison, Demetrius. Betty Lloyd was our Metro liaison, Demetrius. They came to numerous meetings. We went to all- various alternatives. They did a- they did a platform all the way between Oak and Western around the old station, upgrade to that. We looked at upgrading that old station. It was as expensive to upgrade it as, you know, because you wanted to accommodate more riders. We did a platform that was all the way east closer to Prospect Avenue.
Yeah.
They did the split platform design. There was various options discussed over numerous meetings. When it came down to-
Jim, wasn't part of that split platform, no, based on the waiting time that the residents had, the backups we were having? And also, wasn't part of that, that the local businesses that we had in the downtown area also were requesting the split pa- platform?
A little bit of both.
Okay.
But one thing that the local businesses wanted is to keep the train station downtown. That was the key, and only certain options did that. And the- and the dwell time and keeping the gates down were one of the big reasons to do the split platform. But it was not something that they came in and said, this is how you have to do it. It went through a lot of discussions. And I want to say it's probably five to eight years of discussions, and I've got them all in there, so. And that was the decision made, and they built it. And then-
Because we did have the opportunity making that, you know, single, not a split station, but a single station. And it just turned out that we ended up with the split platform. But there was so much discussion at that time. You said it was, what, five to eight years?
It's a long time. I have a little memo in there, but it took a while. It wasn't like one meeting, and then here we're going with it.
How old is that station now? Would you guess?
It was built in 2007. No, I'm sorry, not 2000, probably like 2005. So it's going on-
Twelve years.
Twelve years.
Twelve years.
And the platforms are older, because they built one- that platform west of Oak was built first.
We're not talking significantly older, though.
Maybe two more years.
Is it unlikely to just tweak what we have here, submit the grant, and roll the dice? I mean, that's really what would make the most sense, is let's get a grant submit- proposal submitted and see where it leads us.
Are we going to submit to Congressman Roscom's office?
Ice it up.
Is that where- is there- I don't know of any other grant funds that are available, particularly, as Paula said, the earmark. You know, it doesn't qualify for STP, CMAC, ITEP, any of those.
So we're clear. My conversation with him was to advise him that we've had several conversations with Metro. We went to the RTA board. Nobody has any money. He gave me a phone number to call, a lady in his office who handles the grant process. That's all I have. So what I'd like to do is apply for the grant. If we don't get it, we don't get it. If we get it, maybe we'll improve the downtown traffic area. That's- that's the roll of the dice.
Well, I think we can work with the congressman's office and find what kind of information they need to forward their process, and see what- see if we have an alignment with what we have, and if there's some gaps, we'll bring it back to you. But if not, we'll just put it together and submit it.
There we go. All he did say was, you know, try to apply, because it's first come, first served, like everything else. So if you get your plan in before somebody else, you might be considered before another town. There you go.
Let me ask the- if we do move forward, you know, as I was saying, you know, by all means, you know, you try to do that, find out, would it be for the combining the platforms, or would it be for the underpass? What's-
Platforms first, I guess. That would probably increase the traffic down there.
I think you'd need some direction in that to know what the grant would be for.
If the- the grant comes through, and they say we have 11 million, I guess we can ask for all of it. They don't know what's out there.
We'll put something together, talk to the congressman, as Paula said, for the realignment of the platforms.
Thank you.
Just as long as this doesn't rest on the taxpayers of our community. That's really what concerns me the most. That's why I asked that question about parking, and I agree. You know, I'll never see the end of this, but, you know, I wouldn't want to burden taxpayers for this. If the grant money's available, by all means, take advantage of it.
You've already said we don't have the money. The purpose of the grant application is to see if the federal government can help us, because Metro says we don't have any money, the RTA says we don't have any money, and we know we don't have it.
I think that's the course we've directed the staff to take. So that being said, I think we have finished.
I'll entertain a motion. You adjourn the committee of the whole meeting?
So moved.
TL seconds that.
All right. And spirit. Move by trustee Kamer, seconded by trustee Carbonaro. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Kamer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Frankie?
Yes.